It was working at the beginning, so you get some credit for that. Okay, so are you ready to s- are we ready to start? Okay, I'd like to call the August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes, here, okay. The next thing is the approval of the agenda. Somebody like to approve the agenda, and I believe we're going to change the order of the cases.
There is one modification to the agenda where it's flipped in the order. Um, so we will be hearing Mercy, the case, um, one, two thousand and five, Anderson, major modification first, and then case four, two thousand and fourteen, Anderson, major modification second.
Okay, that sounds good. Could we appro- could somebody make a motion to approve the agenda of flipping those two?
I'll make a motion to approve with that substitution or change.
Okay, thank you, second, is there a second? Okay, uh, motion and second, roll call.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Okay, next thing is approval of the minutes from July twenty-sixth. There are three of us here to do that. Did anybody have, I've got one correction, did anybody else have corrections on that before we motion? Okay, no. On page, uh, t-t-t-six, uh, about halfway down, we're Mr. Palo speaking, third sentence. Uh, I think it, we meant to say, he noted that he had crafted an open space covenant, so take out the question mark and draft, so open space covenant, which notes that it will be a separate parcel. Okay. With that change, um, let's see, is there a motion to approve? So Anne was here, and Sarah was here, and I was here.
Hi, we'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, meeting with the change noted by the chair.
Okay, thanks, second? Okay, motion second, roll call.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Obstein.
Uh, Ms. McBride?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Henson?
Obstein.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Okay. So then the first case we're going to hear is one, two thousand and five. It's a public hearing for a major modification. This is at seventy-five hundred State Road. Filed by Mark Cottle of Holt House Lackner Signs on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy Hospital. It's zoned OO planned office district. The applicant's requesting additional wayfinding signs, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. The location again, as Mr. Chair has stated, is at seventy-five hundred State Road. And the request is a major modification from case one, two thousand and five, Anderson. The tract size is approximately twenty-seven acres, and it has frontage on state, uh, twelve hundred feet of frontage on state, as well as slightly over fifteen hundred feet of frontage on Five Mile Road. There's an increase of grade toward the south. And then the existing use, obviously, is the hospital, but there are office buildings on the site as well, and their parking garage. The proposed development, the applicant is proposing to install five new directional signs, two on existing foundations, and then three additional signs. The signs vary in size from forty-eight square feet to twenty-seven square feet, and then a smaller one at sixteen square feet. Because this was a planned district, and the proposed signs are slightly larger than what is permitted for directional signs, um, this is why it's required to go through the zoning commission for approval. So here's the zoning history on the site. Um, the original hospital was built under case one nineteen eighty-two, and then through the years, it's had multiple changes. The last one was in two thousand and five with the, um, office patient tower, or not the office, but the patient tower in the front of the hospital. And then in two thousand and twelve, there was a modification for additional signs. So we kept the case one, two thousand and five, that was a modification to case one, two thousand and five and two thousand and twelve, and this will be an additional modification. So this is the, uh, site, again, State Road here, and this is Five Mile. This is Wolfangle. The property is zoned OO, planned office district. Um, to the east of the site is zone B residence, same as to the west of the site. And then to the south is also OO, which is the healthplex. This is an aerial of the site in question, again, the main entrance is off of state, but then there's also a secondary entrance off of Five Mile. The topography. This is a little difficult to read, but it is also in your packet. These are the proposed locations for the signs. Again, there are five proposed signs, three of which are on existing foundations. Uh, but sign A and sign B would be as you first come in off of State Road. And we'll see the, um, drawings, but in your packet, sign A and sign B are on the next page. And then you have the other two signs that are located on a drive next to the office building, the medical office building. And then the fifth sign would be located on the drive as you come in off of Five Mile Road. These are the proposed signs, uh, A, B, C, and D, to give you an idea of directional signage. And then this is the sign E. So these are pictures of the locations of the existing signs that would be replaced, as well as the new locations. This, again, is the main entrance coming in off of, uh, State Road. The office, uh, I'm sorry, the patient tower, keep calling it the office tower. This is the medical office building and the location of, um, the other, one of the other signs. And then this is the main drive next to the parking garage as you go out to Five Mile Road. This is just looking at state, the main entrance to the hospital. So the approving resolution from two thousand and twelve, which addressed, um, it was a modification to the sign, the only condition on there was, it said substantial performance with the site plan and landscaping plan dated October the fifth, two thousand and twelve is required. Not my, applicant's not requesting any changes to this, just modifications to some of the signs. This is a description, again, of the signs that they are requesting. Um, A and B are the same size at, um, forty-eight square feet, or I'm sorry, twenty, uh, the existing is forty-eight, and they're going to twenty-seven. And then you can see the size is for D and E, which are both new signs. So staff is recommending approval, um, of the signed package. Since this is a planned office, um, district and it's a hospital campus, it does make sense for the signs to be larger to help direct traffic to the medical office buildings, or the emergency room, or other locations on the campus. It's a little different than if it was a standalone office building, say, on Beauchamp Avenue or Five Mile Road. And with it being a hospital and a medical campus, um, you do need this extra, the larger signs to help direct the traffic. The signs are also on the interior of the campus and not necessarily along the periphery of the campus, which also, uh, makes us stand out and separates it from our other planned office districts. So because of that, staff is recommending approval. Two conditions that are recommended, all the previous rec- conditions, um, be incorporated. And number two, that future expansions, or again, future changes to the signage would be reviewed by the zoning commission. So be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Paul, very good, um, report and detail. Does anybody on the zoning commission have, uh, any questions for Paul or Sarah tonight?
I just had one question, how tall is sign E? I guess that the other ones are twelve, but I couldn't figure out how tall the new sign is, that sign E.
I don't know what the base is, um, but we can ask the applicant that. It's four feet tall, where the actual wording is, but I don't know what the, um, the pole itself is. So we can ask that to the applicant.
Did anybody on the board have any more questions about this? Okay, thank you, and I neglected to recognize Stefano down on the end there, too, who's helping us out a lot, so wanted to acknowledge him. And he may have some answers that you guys don't have.
And he may, because he did actually help with the staff report, so he, he probably will have, and he will present the next case.
We appreciate his help a lot, so, um, so with that being said, I'd like to invite anybody up who would like to, um, present this case, the major modifications for the hospital signage, somebody here tonight? If you could give us your na- hi, could you give us your name and address, please?
It's Kendra Overbeck. And work address, personal address.
Either one's fine.
I work for Mercy Health Anderson Hospital, seventy-five hundred State Road.
Terrific, thank you for coming tonight. And what did you like to tell us about the new signs you're proposing and, uh, what you're thinking there?
The purpose of this is really to replace worn signage. If you drive on campus, you'll see the paint chipping off of what is there, so it's just an improvement. It's also to help directionally get people, we have two medical office buildings, we have the emergency department, the women's center. We're just hitting the high points and then the parking garages so we can get people to the right sections of the campus. That's our objective, that's probably our biggest pain point on a daily basis outside and inside the hospital, is getting people where they need to go. So that's our objective with this. Emergency department, obviously, is first and foremost, and making sure people can get to the emergency department and know exactly where to go. So you'll see that highlighted in red on all the new signs. So it's just updating everything.
Very good, thank you. Does anybody, before you sit down, does anybody on the zoning commission have a question for Ms. Overbeck?
And I wish I could answer your one question, but we will get an answer on the exact dimensions of that one sign.
Okay.
I don't have the exact dimensions with me.
Yes, further question? Please go ahead, Ms. McBride.
Yeah, thank you, um, so if you could just, how, how tall are the existing signs?
I should have come more prepared. Quite honestly, these are targeted to people in the car so that you see them at height, at when you drive in. I was just gonna say, if you, my guess would be eight, between eight and ten feet, but I would have to look.
Okay, the new ones, I think, are proposed at twelve, which-
We're adding a few more with arrows to be very descriptive and very prescribed. And it's Mercy Health, we have a brand standard, if you will, so this is what has been used at other hospitals throughout the system. So we're trying to get up to date and then also follow the standards that we have as an organization.
And maybe this was on here and I missed, are they illuminated?
There are, I believe, two that have lighting, I need to double check on how many, they all, not, not all of them are.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McBride. Is there any other questions from the zoning commission? Okay.
One question.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gothard.
Uh, for sign E is totally different than the others, because you have the exposed base below the signage. Would you be willing to wrap that in the same fashion, even if it does have letter all the way to the ground?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
Yeah, so sign E.
Oh, because it's the standard, doesn't go all the way to the-
It's got a hole with the sign on top, would you be able to just wrap that to look like all the others with no lettering below? That exists, you know, proposed height?
I need to check if the others, what the fabrication process includes, if we're able to do that. I would think that would be an option, but I would need to check. I actually work for Mercy Health and Administration, I'm not with the sign company. So if the gentleman were here, we'd have a lot more of the exact answers, but I can definitely check on that.
Yeah, I think that would-
I'm sure they can.
So you're trying to make them all more uniform? Okay, okay.
Yeah, just so you don't see the hole, that's good.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for Ms. Overbeck? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, uh, anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this case? Any, anybody who's, uh, opposed? Okay, thank you, and we'll close the, the, um, well, I don't know if we want to close the public portion or not. Why don't we leave that open for a minute, is there a discussion among the board? Cause I heard that maybe you might, I heard that we're curious what the existing sign height is, and also, um, if they might wrap that one, uh, sign. It is interesting that the one sign has the exposed pole and the other one's don't, I wonder if that was just, uh, something funny there. What's the board's pleasure, would you like to keep the meeting open so we can get more information? Or, um, do you like to close it and make a decision? Thoughts on that?
I mean, I don't know that we're gonna get any more information.
Well, certainly not tonight, we're not going to, um, we would have to continue this.
I can make a call if you want to come back to this, I will step out and make a few calls. I, I, I'm okay with, with, uh, including the, the lines, ninety-nine point nine.
I don't think you'll need to do that, we might just be able to make a decision with some conditions. Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, close the meeting and, uh, have discussion among the board. Who would like to, uh, start the discussion, if anybody?
And I'll, I'll start the discussion.
Thank you.
Since the signs are interior, you know, sort of the variance from our standards is a little more acceptable for this, you know, commission member. I do think that sign E should be wrapped all the way to grade to unify it with all the other signs that are proposed, and even the signs along the street frontage they did a few years ago. In that same sort of, you know, oval sort of profile. That's one commission's opinion.
Yes, thank you for starting, does anybody else have anything to add to what Mr. Gothard's thoughts were?
I would agree with him, if he likes the sign E, and I do think that that can be done by the sign company. Um, you know, normally twelve foot high for a directional sign is really tall, most-
That is kinda tall.
Yeah, or about half of that, um, at the most. But, uh, as we've talked about, if they are interior to the campus, there is a lot of information that they have to, um, provide on there to adequately direct people, some of whom may be coming in in a challenging situation, shall we say. And I don't want to have to stop my car from going around, going which way is the emergency department, so. So I'm, I'm okay with that, under the circumstances.
Okay, thank you, is there any other comments, um, Ms. Jonas or Mr. Henson?
There's not too much to say, I don't think, I mean, they're, you know, it's also the fact that they're replacing existing signage. And, uh, to Anne's point about the height, I mean, we could ask them to take the, whatever looks about three feet of Mercy Health branding off the top, but I don't think that really makes sense and is needed in this case.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, and I agree with, uh, those comments. And I would just add that, um, the, the hospital's a little unusual because it is a, uh, there's a lot of massing there, so even though these aren't taller than what we'd normally see for a, um, you know, wayfinding sign, I think it's actually not going to be that out of place based on what's going on there. Would, would somebody like to make a motion on this?
Uh, I would make a motion that we approve case one dash two thousand and five, Anderson, a major modification, for Mercy Hospital at seventy-five hundred State Road, uh, based on the recommendations of staff, and with the conditions that they have suggested in our staff report, with the additional condition that, um, sign E be finished to the ground consistent with the finishes assigned to A through D.
Thank you. I'll second that. And so we have got a motion and a second. And before we vote on that, I have one question procedurally from the staff, because the staff also recommended a variance. Do we do that separately, do we need to wrap it in, or are we just good with the motion that we've got on the table to handle that?
My, Mr. Chair, my motion was intended to include the recommendations of staff. If I should have specifically said, including approval of the differences, then I would, I would have been wrong.
I think you did say that, so, thank you. So we will, I got, uh, Ms. McBride's motion with the staff recommendations, which would include the variance. Uh, Mr. Henson seconded that. Any other discussion on that? Roll call.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for that motion.
Yeah, I am going to leave you at this point, because I have done work for eighteen eighty-three, so I'm going to speak my-
Okay, well, thanks for coming for that first case.
Thanks, Anne, good seeing you, take care.
Have a good night. So we'll go ahead and call the, uh, next case. It's a, it's case four dash two thousand and fourteen, so we're bringing one back from two thousand and fourteen. It's a public hearing for a major modification of the approval in that case. It's located at seventy-six forty Beauchamp Avenue. Applicant filed, application filed by Anna Sparks of Queen City Awning, on behalf of K V Anderson, the property owner. It's zone double E planned business district. The applicant is requesting a major modification from the approv- approved three seasons room for kitchen eighteen eighty-three to an open canopy, which would be thirty-five feet by twenty-five feet. Thank you.
Stefano is going to give this presentation.
Okay.
Thank you for the introduction, um, next slide, please. So the proposed development, uh, the applicant is proposing to install a thirty-five feet by twenty-five feet, uh, fabric canopy over the existing outdoor dining area, uh, with five posts in the front of the awning going into existing concrete slab. Um, the tract size is, uh, two point two five acres, and, uh, the site has about four hundred and ninety feet, uh, of frontage on Beauchamp and three hundred and forty feet on Wolfangle. Uh, for the site history, um, Beauchamp Mall was constructed in the sixties, it went through a lot of changes through the years in the eighties. And then, um, in two thousand and three, the Anderson Town Center was built, and Kroger was, uh, Kroger bought their property there. Next slide. Uh, in, um, the most recent change was, um, a zone change in, uh, two thousand and fourteen. Um, the property was, um, proposed to change from C Residence, E Retail, and E P U D, uh, to, uh, EE Planned Retail, along with, um, along with a retail development along, at the corner of Beauchamp Avenue and Wolfangle Road. Um, in twenty, um, in December of two thousand and fourteen, the trustees approved, uh, the zone change. And in February of two thousand and fifteen, the zoning, uh, commission approved the final development plan for phase one, which was the Kroger expansion. And then in May of two thousand and fifteen, they approved phase two, which was the retail, um, development, which was the shops at Anderson Town Center. And the conditions for those were, um, a front yard setback of zero on Beauchamp Avenue, and, um, eight feet and eleven inches on Wolfangle, where thirty was required from the right of way, and a setback of ten feet from the right of way for two dumpster enclosures. Uh, next slide, please, oh, wait, no, sorry, go back, yeah. On July twenty-third, on July twenty-third of two thousand and eighteen, the Anderson Township, uh, Zoning Commission approved a major modification, uh, to the final development for case one, two thousand and fourteen, Anderson, for the enclosure of, um, the eight hundred and seventy-five square feet patio, uh, to create a three season dining space. However, uh, that was never constructed. And then, uh, there is three BZI cases that were approved for this property. Case nine, two thousand and four, BZI granted a variance for, um, a maximum height for light poles in the parking lot. Uh, case twelve, twenty, uh, two thousand and four, BZI approved wall signs for, um, the Kroger main building and the fuel center. And case fifteen, uh, two thousand and four, BZI approved, uh, unified sign plan for the Anderson Town Center site. Uh, this is a property map, um, the building on the east side towards Wolfangle is, uh, the bottom, the bottom of that building is where the proposed development is. Next slide. This is an aerial view, again, you can see, um, the plaza going on to the corner of Wolfangle and Beauchamp. Uh, the topography is pretty flat, uh, there's a little bit of a slope going northeast towards Wolfangle. Uh, and then there's the zoning, again, is zoned, um, EE. Um, we have some residential up into the northeast, uh, corner of the property. Uh, this is a picture of the main building, it's currently a kitchen eighteen eighty-three. Um, this is looking towards the corner of Wolfangle and Beauchamp, where the patio, uh, the patio, outdoor patio is. Uh, again, this is another picture of the patio. Um, this is looking down on Beauchamp, then looking down Wolfangle. Uh, this is, uh, the plaza, um, and pedestrian entry, um, from the street. And then this is the, um, McAllister Deli Awning that, um, is, uh, very similar to what the applicant is proposing. So this is the proposed site plan, um, and then we can see where the awning, um, will go, we'll cover that outdoor patio and, uh, setback, uh, the setback given, they're all compliant to the previous approved plan. Uh, these are other, um, views and elevation of the, uh, proposed awning. For the findings, I'll go over the, um, applicable plans, next slide. Um, the Beauchamp plan, um, the site falls within neighborhood three of the Beauchamp plan. Recommendation for the following neighborhood, um, are street, uh, street facing retail, outdoor pla- uh, outdoor plazas that engage the street, parking lot connections between neighborhooding properties, uh, building that promote pedestrian friendly environment, uh, street trees, uh, landscape, and walls alongside walks, uh, two-story massing with unique elements. The covered patio will provide additional dining options for customers, giving possibility to enjoy, uh, outdoor dining while also being protected by weather. Uh, the proposed awning will no, will be no larger than the previously approved patio, and maintains a nine point nine feet front yard setback to Wolfangle, consistent with the approved eight feet and eleven inches. Uh, for the design guidelines, um, the app, uh, the application is consistent with the following. For site planning, open air and semi, and semi enclosed spaces that allow people to congregate and intersect, um, away from the flow of traffic, important elements of good urban design that should be encouraged in new developments. For architecture, uh, when properly installed and maintained, awnings and canopies can enhance, um, the appearance and function of a building by providing shade, shelter, shadow patterns, and visual interest. When awnings are used, they should comple- they should complement the design and materials and color of the building. So, um, the proposed design varies, uh, from the enclosure that was approved in case one, two thousand and fourteen, Anderson, major modification on July twenty-third, uh, of, uh, two thousand and eighteen. The design approved in two thousand and eighteen was a full enclosure, so it would have, um, it would create a three season dining space, uh, for the building, and the currently proposed design is only a fabric fi- a fabric canopy covering the patio, so creating outdoor dining, but, um, covered instead of a full covered three season room. For staff recommendation, um, staff recommends the approval of a major modification to the final development plan, um, for case four, two thousand and fourteen, Anderson, for the patio enclosure. The proposed improvements are consistent with the approving resolution for the site and condition contained in the case. Uh, the enclosure is consistent with adopted plans such as Beauchamp plans and the di- design guidelines. And, um, the proposed improvements are consistent with setbacks approved for the building. And the modification will allow for the applicant to realize reasonable profit, um, from the property while not compromising the intent of the office zoning district. Uh, one recommendation that, um, staff has is that, uh, the proposed awning shall match existing design of the building, um- um, and be consistent with the awning of the adjacent building to Southwest, which is, uh, the McAllister awning that we saw earlier. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Stefano. Uh, very complete report. Um, does anybody on the zoning commission have a question for staff? No questions, okay. Um, I do not have a question. I do have a question, which is, do we have a picture of what it was originally proposed to look like?
Funny, funny you should ask that, 'cause we're going over the review today and the PowerPoint. I was like, we should have put a picture of that in there. I have the folder here. I can pass it around.
Oh, he's got the old school. Okay. That's, that was a good question, then.
It was a good question.
Let me look for it real quick and then I'll pass it out.
Yeah.
Mr. Ellis, from memory, it was a very extension of the existing building. Architecture with stone and geese and things like that.
Yeah, that's what I thought it might be, because it's a nice looking building.
Paul has provided me the picture and we're looking at it right now. Thank you, Paul, for digging that up.
Well, thanks to Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah. So that answered my question. Was there any other, uh, questions based on that, or? Okay. With no more questions of staff, would the applicant like to come forward and present the case? Who's here for the applicant? I see two people, potentially. Go ahead, please.
Andrew Angelo with Queen City Awning.
Andrew Angelo?
Yes, A N G E L O.
Thank you, Andrew. Please go ahead. Oh, could you, could you provide your address to him? I'm not hearing him through that mic very well, honestly.
Sixteen eighty Neeb, N E E B Road. Sixteen eighty Neeb, N E E B Road. It's four five two three three.
Thank you. And, uh, would you like to introduce yourself also?
Yes, sir. Uh, Matt Davy. I am with Kroger and a representative of Kitchen Eighteen Eighty-three. Um, and the address is eighty-two thirty-five East Dale Drive, and that is four five two five five.
On East Dale, okay. Terrific, uh, Matt. Thank you. So, Andrew, would you like to go ahead, please, and tell us about, uh, the awning? Or Matt, whoever.
Basically, as the re- the good report showed, um, basically, we're going to be enclosed in the fenced-in area with a, with a, ba- basically, it's a four C, it's a year-round canopy, so we'll be, be up year-round, um, and, uh, provide them the opportunity to sit outside whenever weather permits.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Did anybody have any questions?
I have a few questions.
Mr. Gothard?
The proposed fabric, is it the same color, black in nature as the adjacent parcels and?
The, the fabric will be black. The front, the entire frame will be painted black also.
Okay. Is the slope of the canopy also the exact same slope as the one that's associated with McAllister Deli?
It is not.
Okay, what's the difference?
It can't, it can't be achieved. The McAllisters' canopy is a lot narrower in depth, um, also is a lot higher in the front. In order to get snow load requirements, we have to continue that slope out further. And there are some limiting, limit, limitations how high we can go on the building with the existing signage.
So, um, will the ends be wrapped and the fascia also wrap the fabric?
These, these sides of the canopy, the wedge, as you might call it, will, will be wrapped, but the actual sides will be open.
Okay. No roll downs or anything like that proposed or will be included?
Nothing proposed.
Okay. Will they be included in some future idea, or?
That I don't.
Possibility down the road based upon business return, yes.
Um, the fascia will also be wrapped, the low side to one foot six height?
Correct.
Be wrapped in fabric up and behind?
Correct.
Lighting. Uh, there's existing, based on the photograph and site visit, you know, there's existing sort of puck lights on the building. Will they be maintained?
That's correct, yes.
And then what other additional lighting will be in the canopy area?
Due to the nature of the lighting that's there, we have, it'll be sufficient to start, so we don't have any additional plans right now and limited electrical being run out there as it is, so that would have to be a future modification if we were to go that route.
Okay. So no additional lighting underneath the canopy? Uh, any other sort of electric, like ceiling fans or anything like that? Would that actually hang down below the frame?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. You know, with the height of eight feet and the, you know, slope of six to the high side, where are you going to be on the building? Obviously, I guess above the light fixtures.
Correct. We'll actually be above the speakers in that picture, so we'll be approximately fourteen feet.
All right. And how, what association is that to the kitchen eighteen eighty-three signage that's there?
Uh, it is, if I remember correctly, the bottom of that sign is around fourteen six, fourteen five or fourteen six.
So you'll be at the high side, what, again, fourteen what?
The, the canopy?
Yes.
Uh, fourteen to fourteen one.
So you'll be just below the restaurant and bar signage?
Approximately five inches.
Any changes to that existing sign proposed, or just be, remain in place?
Correct.
That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gothard. Uh, Mr. Henson or Ms. Jonas?
Just a quick question. The, the fence that's there is going to remain. That's not going anywhere. So is the awning gonna, the post's gonna be on the inside or the outside of the fence?
The, the proposed would be the post on the outside of the fence, so the canopy can extend just past the fence. So when it is raining, the water hits outside, so they can get the most seating area possible.
Right. And then, I didn't have this question until Brian asked his question, um, and it, and it's kind of moot. But, uh, what happened to that patio?
Uh, budgetary constraints, we'll say that, just to get the part, the project off the ground.
Gotcha.
It was a very ornate, uh, involved design that obviously was structural, so it was weighed both ways.
Gotcha. That's all I had, I think.
Okay. No, no questions. And I just had one, which was, I saw the certificate of flame retardants, so I'm curious. You know, a lot of times outside, they'll put those propane heaters. Are those possible with this kind of, uh, thing? And they may not, they may not have been possible with this. What's the, how do you guys handle that, or is there any? One, is that possibility? And two, if it is, were you thinking about that?
Um, with my personal experience, none of the propane or like tree heaters that you're kind of referencing would be adequate for this space. If we were to go with any type of heating, it would most likely be, uh, like a forced air, that I've used previously, but in my experiences, aren't just very, aren't very effective in an open air setting.
And sometimes you see, um, when there's an awning like that, then later on, they put some, and I'm not seeing it here, some kind of like plastic walls up. Is that part of the plan?
It's not part of our initial plan, but if we start to see the return, we, that was something we'd be looking at down the road, hopefully, if, if things go well.
Okay. Um, okay. That sounds good. I don't have any more questions, then, so. Uh, so feel free to have a seat and then we'll discuss that. Thank you very much. And I'll ask a question to Paul and Sarah and Stefano, if they add those, uh, plastic, and I not, don't have any o- opposition to it, but I'm just wondering, is that within what we're talking about here?
So we brought this before you because we felt this request was substantially different than what you previously heard and substantially different in materials. Um, it was a three season room. This was just a canopy. Sorry, I don't know if that was me or not. The other aspect, and I don't know if you remember, but there were variances for the setback given off of Wolfangle. So the design of that three season room was discussed. There was even a condition that windows would be added instead of a blank wall because the zoning commission at the time was very concerned of the appearance from Wolfangle. I don't know that we would bring, if they started bringing plastic down on the side of, of this, if that would warrant a return back to you or not. If you feel like it should, then I would say we would, but I, I, I think from my staff, I don't know that we feel that it would probably warrant a review.
Okay.
It's not increasing the size of the, of the area.
I think that's, I think that's good to have that out there, just in case. Okay, well, so we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. Um, discussion among the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think since it'll be sort of unified with the other awnings that are part of the complex, it's nice. I think unfortunately, it's missing a design opportunity of matching the slope that's associated with McAllister, so it's going to be two distinct elements in the same courtyard. You know, that's unappealing to me, you know, because it starts to disjoin the architecture and the design of that corner that, you know, even during the initial designs, I remember we were very careful and very concerned about open public space and making sure, you know, presented a good face to the public because that is a major intersection in the township. So that's, I think, my biggest concern of the proposed, uh, application.
Understood. Did you have anything else to add to that, Mr. Gothard?
I did not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Jonas, what, what was your thoughts on it?
I mean, I don't know what I can add. Were you talking about the signs that were up here and what you have on?
Yeah, so the awning, you know, like this one's going to be fairly flat. The McAllisters is a higher steep slope. So, you know, this sort of different angles that you're going to be seeing all on that same corner. It could still be achieved, as this is going to be, require additional work for them to achieve that slope.
Oh, that's right, because it's, uh, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Henson?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'll lean kind of in the other direction and just, I think it's a good addition. It, it almost seems weirder to have a patio without the awning than it does to have the awning here, so I think it'd be a nice addition. I do kind of actually have a weird worry about the plastic on Wolfangle. If they do that, just the glare at that intersection, you know, turning right off of, uh, Eight Mile, or, I'm sorry, Beauchamp or anything like that, but we're not reviewing that now. Um, and I think the sign is great.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I like what, uh, hear what Mr. Gothard is saying, and I guess, um, it would, I would prefer to have that s- actually, I wouldn't have ever even thought about that. So that's the architecture finer points that I don't understand sometimes, and those are good points. I think on balance, um, and I have, probably all of us have sat out at that patio, and I do think, um, on balance, it, uh, even though it would not be, um, meet the geometry necessarily to have that balance, overall, um, I think it would be a benefit to, to have it there and then justify the, uh, modification that would be asked for here. So, um, I guess I would, even though there's, could, could be, you know, uh, the original one was, was really nice. Um, this is a decent looking awning, I think. And my main concern, honestly, was, would it be out year-round? Because I didn't want just the framing to be out there, and it does sound like it's going to be year-round. So, uh, I guess I would be satisfied with this as a compromise. So that's all I have to say. Would somebody like to try and fashion a motion for this?
I can fashion a motion.
Thank you.
A motion to approve case four dash twenty fourteen, Anderson, Kroger at seventy-six forty Beauchamp Avenue. With staff recommendations that the proposed awning matched the existing design of the building, meaning the fabric will be black in nature to match the existing fabric in the complex. Their frames will be complet- completely painted black, including the post. The slope of the awning be modified to more represent the other awnings that are on site of their adjacent tenant, McAllisters.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Jonas. Any other discussion? I'll ask one question, Mr. Gothard, if you know. Do you think they'll be able to make that modification and still, uh, install the awning satisfactorily?
I think they will, will affect the existing signage on that wall.
Okay. Paul, if they have to adjust that signage a little bit, that's something the staff could approve, correct? Okay, all right, thank you. Um, roll call?
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. And I see a question there, and at this point, with the hearing being closed, uh, the appropriate thing would be to d- have that discussion with Paul, but we're all sitting here as well, but we would not be able to take any further action on that. So let me, let us wrap up the meeting here and then, uh, certainly Paul and Sarah will be available for any questions. So, there's nothing else on the agenda. Uh, anything else from the staff?
No, I don't think so. Our September meeting is scheduled for September the twenty-seventh. I'm not sure if we will have cases. If we don't get cases, we will notify you in advance.
We'll stand by for that.
Stand by for that.
Okay.
But, um, twenty-seventh.
All right. Uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Till we see you again. Good to see you.